I'm going to call the Thursday, January ninth, 2020 Planning Board Meeting Order. I'll accept a motion for the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have a continued public hearing, special permit, residential compound in stormwater, zero countryway, zero rear countryway, 483 rear countryway.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And happy new year.
You too. Thank you. So Jeff Delisi, I'm here tonight with Attorney Michelle Nozo, who's sitting behind us, and she's quite interested in the work that we do. In addition, I have Brad Merritt, the project applicant on my left, and Kevin Grady on my right from Grady Consulting. And as you mentioned, Ann, this is a continued public hearing. We have a proposal for a special permit project under the residential compound development provisions of the zoning bylaw. We're proposing five house lots on this property. Just by way of a quick education, this section of the zoning bylaw encourages large lot development in a manner that doesn't maximize density. And it has certain objectives, which are to reduce construction costs, reduce impacts on abutting properties, eliminate town responsibilities and costs, and preserve the semi-rural character of the town. So here we have five lots on a tract that is more than four times the gross size of the required lot area in the district. We're proposing access to be provided by an access road off of countryway. And since our last hearing, we've rectified the issue concerning a single lot with a single tract, excuse me, a single tract with a single owner. Grady Consulting provided responses to the town's peer review consultant's comments. And we just recently received additional comments in response to those. We've provided our responses. And I have also provided the board with a draft of a legal document that creates the access and the easements and so forth within the project. And so happy to answer any questions. I've been talking with Karen over the last few days about some issues that I'm sure she'd like to raise. And we're here to address anything you might have.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Karen? I just wanted to say that our consulting engineer is not here tonight due to a death in the family. Otherwise, he would be here presenting his own report. So I'm going to start off with, it is correct that they have filed an 81X plan, and so it is one tract, one ownership. Does the board want them just to fill out a new application, just the first page of an application, so that we get all the correct information for how we're going to eventually write a decision?
Yes.
Okay, so would you object to that? Okay.
So long as we're not starting a new process, be happy to.
No, no, it's just really so we get all the right information, how, you know, I mean, I think I've got it, but I just want it verified from.
Call it sort of amended application.
Right, I just want it verified, you know, from their point of view. I've had conversations with Jeff over the past few days relating to some of the structures on site, and the applicant is going to be working to have the 50-foot buffer around some parts of the property, particularly the Aberdeen, the backyards to the Aberdeen. And I've been talking to them about potentially asking them to look at the back of 483 countryway, too, so that there would be a buffer there as well. John Chesha points out in his report that there is no screening on the west side of the access road. Because it's a 50-foot, basically 50-foot strip, there is no screening on the west side where Mr. Merritt's son lives. He basically, in his comments, he basically asked, is the board okay with that? So can the board offer some feedback on that issue? If you need Mr. Grady to point it out on the plan, maybe Mr. Grady could point it out on the plan.
Todd Merritt lives here at 489. The common driveway is located in this area here. One of the other comments that Mr. Chesha asked us to modify is we proposed a temporary grading easement. We have now changed that to a permanent grading easement on his lot. So there's a shoulder right here that they're asking about screening. There's no dwelling in this location. The dwelling is back here. This is basically his access drive. The next house is the applicant's brats. So the owners, I don't believe are overly concerned with screening in that area. Those are butters.
Okay. Karen?
So the board needs to give direction, so, you know, that comment can be either satisfied by next time or not.
So I guess I'd just like to make sure I understand what you're asking here is, you want to eliminate the screening?
There is no screening proposed.
And you don't want to add screening?
Correct.
The homeowner, abutting property, has provided some indication that that's acceptable?
We have nothing in writing, but it is, I mean.
I think it's here.
Yeah.
It's the applicant's son.
It's me.
Yeah.
At this location, yeah, there's going to be, you already have woods.
Yeah.
That are going to remain in this location, so there is an actual buffer there. I probably should have indicated that as well.
Oh, there's trees that aren't coming down.
Correct. There's a tree line, there's some trees through here. The screening is happening on the 11 lot in this instance.
There's a stone wall in the drop point.
There is a stone wall at the front of the property, but the stone wall is on the property. It's not in the right-of-way of the countryway. This one falls on the property.
Okay.
So the board is okay with this proposal? Okay. I suggested that after this meeting tonight, that I have a meeting next week or the week after with planning, conservation, Mr. Grady, our consultant, and whoever else from the applicant wants to be there. Because it's been told to me that conservation has some issues with some of the detention basin. And I'd kind of like to, you know, we don't want to make them do more plan sets than necessary, so it'd be just good to get all that ironed out so that on their next iteration, everything can be done one more time. So we're hoping that that will come together.
Okay.
Is that something that Mr. Chesha identified as well? The detention basin issue you're talking about?
No, he didn't identi, it relates to planting with conservation. And so we want to bring some other issues in there, so that hopefully everything will be ironed out between planning and conservation.
Yeah, there's not much jurisdiction, there's not much work within CONCOM's jurisdiction, but there is some.
Right.
And they've asked us some questions, and it probably will result in some plantings being identified on the plan, maybe a slight revision to the scope of the basin. And I think Karen just wants to make sure we're all on the same page, so your set is their set, vice versa.
Right.
Their comment.
Where is that on the plan up here?
The 100-foot buffer zone is basically through the berm on the detention basin, infiltration basin. They want plantings on the back.
I see, yeah.
Here. We're required to have access around the basin. And this is actually a, the berm is a constructed dam, if you will. We can't really put large plantings on it. This is a structure that we can ask might compromise the integrity of that. We will happen to plant smaller things on the back of that that can be mowed and maintained. Okay, thank you.
So John also pointed out that the berm, the top of the berm is six feet. And he wanted the board to kind of opine if they thought that that was sufficient for maintenance for the basin. I mean, I don't know how maintenance is proposed here, but I would think that a small, like a small gator or something, is what's going to be used for maintenance. And six-feet-wide access on the top of the berm would be sufficient, that they would be able to maintain the basin. But he did ask if the board is okay with that.
How steep is it, the slope?
It's four-to-one slope because it's in the Water Resource Protection District. So it's a gentle slope.
So it's six feet flat across the top?
Right, yeah.
That's the width of the berm.
How far down?
It's a standard width that we use for infiltration basins. I did reach out to DEP on this matter, and they indicated that there was no minimum or maximum width on that.
What a piece of equipment it's only going to be?
A mini excavator, yeah. A mini excavator could easily get there. If there's a major issue, you would just bring in a large excavator and go over the easement, take care of it, and work your way back out.
And mill the berm back out, kind of thing?
Yep, yep.
So the board seems to be okay with that philosophy?
It seems reasonable to me.
Okay.
Ben?
Yeah?
Okay, so another one of John Chesha's point was, does the board want the opinion of a traffic engineer for if there is safe access to the site? And showing how the vegetation impacts the sightlines.
We did receive a letter from Jennifer Laura concerning the intersection.
Has there been any sightline analysis?
Yes.
Yeah, so I can.
Got a sheet full.
I'm just asking questions so you can page through all your stuff.
You guys are really on top of things.
So we provided site distance analysis of the roadway. John asked in his last letter that we just responded to, the easement, the clearing easement to be created across 489. And it's literally with stone walls. It's a small triangle, maybe two or three feet that we need. I think I proposed a five-foot easement to account for that. So currently, there's nothing that's blocking the sightline in either direction. We have site distances 640-plus feet in this direction and 600-plus feet in this direction. We haven't reached the carry of that here in countryway. That's enough for a 60 mile an hour road at 100 percent. So there's good site distances. We're actually on the outside of this car, so it's a perfect location for site distances.
And if we lived in a perfect world, everyone would follow the speed limit and be nice.
And that has a flashing.
Yes, it does have a.
There's a flash beside there, right?
But that's way beyond.
Yeah.
Up past, just past the garage.
Yeah, I live on countryway, and speed is an issue on countryway.
Yes, it is. It is. And it's even an issue through that 20 miles an hour?
Yeah, yep. But Kevin, did you just maybe want to just briefly indicate what kind of your thought process was with respect to trips and traffic?
Sure. Single-family house lots are low trip generators. Peak hour, if there's two people living in each house, if they both have to get to work at the same time, we're looking at 10 trips out in the peak hour, maybe a few back in in the morning. Same thing on the way back in the evening.
Yeah, with those kind of site distances, I can't imagine that, you know, that's an issue. It's just making sure to preserve the feet, like you said, if you're going to create.
Easement.
No grow zone easements. It'd seem like that would be enough.
That's an odd intersection anyways. If you're coming down countryway to take a left, you don't want to countryway, as opposed to, you have to just be really careful when you pull out there.
Yeah.
Are you thinking of putting in a crosswalk to the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street?
That's a wonderful point. I'm not sure we discussed that, but we'd be happy to do that. Yeah, absolutely.
And I'm sure that.
Is it the sidewalks on the other side?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm sure that if there are children in that neighborhood, they will figure out a way to get to help us through the woods.
Yeah, no doubt about it.
That's what they do.
Well, Cushing School, too.
Cushing, yeah.
Adelaide.
No, sorry. That's my neighborhood. At any rate.
So you don't see it's necessary to have the opinion of a traffic engineer? I'm just trying to summarize for each of the points that I highlighted that John raised.
Was John comfortable with the speed estimates that we're talking about? That we have sightlines for 60 miles an hour?
Yeah, his comment was that, so I think we, my response to his initial comment was maybe misconstrued. I was basically saying that I don't think that the subdivision requirements apply here, and that the additional setback from the eye sight is not necessary. He read that, that we shouldn't be using the 85th percentile speed, which would be an increased speed over the 30 mile an hour speed limit that's there now. I think after explaining that to him and telling him that the site distance is adequate for 60 miles an hour at the 100th percentile, but I think he would agree that there's good sight distances. I know we said that in the past as well. I think it's just that he.
Is comfortable that, you know, the 600 feet supports that kind of, you know, speed estimate? I mean, I know people go fast on that road, but 60 miles an hour is really fast.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
But I can tell you, cars, I come out of Whittier a lot and try to go left. Cars come around that corner, you look once, then you go to look again, and cars are already there.
Right there.
I mean, so cars do go fast.
But my understanding is you've got a heck of a sightline here in both directions, right?
Yes, and we're on the other side of that curve. Whittiers, they can't see on the curve that way where this location can.
Anybody?
No problem.
Okay, Ben?
Uh, no.
Okay. So John thought that they're making very good progress on the, they're ironing out the drainage calculations, and they're going to be doing some additional soil testing out there. So that'll address John's other comments. One other comment, he said he would like to see the draft SWIP plan. And I would highly recommend that as well.
Yeah, I'll submit it.
Of course. You will? Absolutely. Karen?
That's an EPA document.
Right, so I mean, the goal in working with the applicant this past week has been trying to get the best project for both the applicant and for the town. So that's kind of where I think we're working towards at this moment. So there may be additional screening that needs to go in protections for the properties.
And I know this just came in Tuesday from the fire department.
Yeah.
Which needs to be reviewed by you all.
Yes, I saw it, and I think we probably want to have a follow-up conversation with the fire department, because I'm not sure, the whole purpose of this bylaw is to discourage the large clunky subdivision roads that we normally see, and to encourage kind of a smarter, calmer development. And I think the width of our road is 18 feet.
It's 20.
20. So we just want to make sure that we're on the same page with the fire department and stuff like that.
They say not less than 20.
Right, I said 20.
Okay, yeah.
One of the things that the fire department wants to see, and I don't believe that's been submitted yet, is we need some type of, how are you going to do the signage for the numbers of the houses? This is a critical concern when you're dealing with 911. The letters have to be, the sign has to be very visible so that the fire department knows exactly where they're going, because these will have, you know, countryway addresses. It's not going to be, this will not be a named street. So that has to be very, very visible, so that there's no delay in emergency response.
So you're talking at the entrance to the road, you see all the numbers?
The entrance to the road, right, right.
But also, too, because the houses go every which way, clearly marked that this is number whatever at that driveway, and so on, and so on, and so on. It has to be there. It's public safety.
Absolutely, yep.
Public safety. And not just on the house.
Yep.
It has to be.
The entrance of the driveway.
At the entrance, big enough so that people like me can read it.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, that's big.
It is big. It's very big.
Massively.
I'll prepare some details.
You know, it's amazing how many houses in this town, and it is a bylaw, that do not have numbers on the houses.
Yeah.
Go figure. All right, Karen, and you?
I think there's, I mean, that's the major comments that I had going over John's report, because they're working on, you know, some of the other issues. The planting, I might just ask that you consider something a little bit more diverse than agrovidies. I don't know, I know that there's a lot of deer in this area, and those are going to become deer food. Even though you're picking green giant, and that's one of the more deer-resistant varieties, I think in the end, if you can try to at least mix it up something so that you don't have, you know, so that the deer just don't eat it all, because they'll eat it if they're hungry enough.
Can I ask a question just about the connection to countryway, the road connection? Is there, have you looked at just the road drainage there? Not going to create, you know, a dam, puddle kind of area, or.
Correct.
Change the stormwater flow on the road?
So, right. So there's a berm along the edge of the road, so that will maintain the drainage in the road. On our side of the road, we have prepared basically the mass highway-type connection, where we have a negative grade going from countryway onto our property, and then it grades up. We have a catch basin at that location.
The countryway is the high point?
Yes, for a short period. Then it goes up, and then it goes from there into infiltration basin.
Are there catch basins along countryway there?
Yes. Write it, I can show you.
So there's a catch basin right here on countryway. That's our closest one. This one across the street is. So it's a berm that directs the water to this basin here. Sorry, it's such a small scale. Water from this point comes to our property here at a low point, and then it goes up onto the property. We have two storm drains here that flow into a subsurface infiltration.
So we're not creating anything that's going to increase the flow to the basins, nor are we creating anything that's going to block the flow?
Correct.
Didn't John have a question on the slope of the entrance?
He called out that it was almost 6%, 5.9 something, if I remember right. So he questioned if that was not too steep.
Was there any?
That is a reasonable slope for approaching the roadway there. It is not steep. It's six feet and 100 feet. And in this case, it's only a short section of about 50 feet. We're at 6%. Otherwise, we're into a curve on the backside. And where we reach the intersection, there's a low point, so it slopes back up to countryway, where the drainage structures are. It is not uncommon to have driveways and roadways at 6% or greater.
Now, would someone in the wintertime have trouble getting up onto countryway?
No. It's that little low area. It goes basically from 6% up to a 1.5% to countryway. So it's flat. It's flat there. It's 1.5 feet and 100 feet.
Similar to the driveway in your son's house?
Yes, it's actually, the driveway on 489 is a bit steeper than what we're proposing.
Ben?
I don't have a grading on the driveway, I'm just in general.
In general.
I don't have anything on the driveway grading, but I have some other comments.
Go for it.
Could you just delineate, like roughly, on the site plan, where the, I guess, where the extent of clearing would be? Just to clarify. I mean, I have the plan, but.
Yep.
That's essentially it. This is probably isn't the best scale. That's the development area. This is the base plan that John asked us to create. Phase one is the green, phase two is the purple.
So the green and the purple get developed, get cleared?
The whole thing's going to get developed, correct.
Is it going to be totally stripped of trees? They're going to try to save anything?
Because of the elevation of groundwater, how high we have to raise the foundations, the road and the septic system, you really can't in the development area. We potentially could, where we're not grading, we don't see contour lines. There may be some opportunities to save some trees.
How much fill are you bringing in?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that.
So the highest point is about four feet in this area here. Again, that's getting the basements out of the groundwater, and then putting the septic system and having a positive grade down to the roadways over the septic systems to get to this basin. That's what's creating the elevation.
But how much fill?
Four feet, is that what you're saying?
How much fill?
You're adding fill for four feet?
Yeah, we showed you the profile. So we're balancing it a bit. On the way up, we're cutting, because it's fairly steep. And then here, we're filling. The idea is we're trying to get the water from the paved areas to the grassland swale, to the water quality swale that's required for drainage in the Water Resource Protection District. Those are difficult to fit into the landscape. It's how long and flat they are. So we have to pitch water to them. The road does not flow from high to low. Otherwise, we just put it along the side of the road. It crosses that, so we need to get water to that low point and then run it.
And it's pretty balanced, so are you.
And it's pretty balanced, so are you bringing in fill or is it balanced?
There will be some fill, yes, there will be some fill. And that's again, seven-and-a-half foot foundation. You have to have that slab out of that groundwater so these buildings come up. And we have this, I think groundwater is five feet in general, depending on where you are on the property, so by the time you get a little separation from that groundwater, which you want to have, is estimated, seasonal high groundwater is estimated, fluctuates it will go higher at some point, so we're going to build in some factor safety there.
Where's the groundwater line on your chart there?
I did not put one on here. I did not prepare one. Do I do have a test hole planned?
You said they're doing more test pits?
They're doing more soil testing, yes.
So we, we went out, you know, when you design these properties, you have to do some initial testing. You guess where the drainage structures and everything, and be hoping you hit them so you don't have to go do it again.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, there, we didn't get them all.
Plus there was a board of health comment too that you needed to address with soil testing too.
Yeah, we still need to permit the septic systems. We did a general coverage of the property to get a feel of what the soils are and they're basically well-drained, poor sand everywhere. Let's see. We have about water at six feet, six feet eight, five feet, four inches, and then there's some areas where we get down ten feet and there's no water, ten to twelve feet.
Okay. Ben?
So I guess on the, on the topic of the, kind of the site design and the extent of clearing and grading and what Ann asked about with the clear cutting, I, since our first public hearing, I thought kind of long and hard about the public comments that we received as well as I guess the purpose of the residential compound development. So I kind of thought about that a lot and I was like, well, the real purpose, right, is what it says in the bill, to promote large lot development, preserve semi-roe character, reduce construction costs and things of that nature, like reduce the impact of the development on a butter. So I thought about that and I was like, well, really what is that? And in my mind, I came up with a little rubric for how to grade that and for me it was that these lots would provide superior environmental services through increased stormwater management, leading to increased groundwater infiltration, reduced heating and cooling effect from urban heat island and things of that nature, and also improved nutrient cycling. I also realized, especially based off public comment, that these lots would also provide superior ecological benefit and habitat and it sounds like this is an area that's rich in ecological services and habitat for the neighborhood. And then I thought about preserving a semi-roe character and that really comes down to really preserving wooded space. So like, large lot development, I guess in a way helps preserve real character, but really only if it's remained wooded. If it's clear cut and just turf grass, I wouldn't really characterize that as rural character and I really think that, listening to some of the abutters' concerns, I'm not sure that, how much it would help them. So I do recognize that the last meeting, we talked, the applicant, we did, seems like they did extend the limit of clearing or reduce, I guess, the amount of clearing. If I remember, we kind of increased the buffer along the back edge. But I guess my main comment now is, is there a way to really, I guess, think a little bit more about how the site, really about how the clear cutting and the grading plan is going to work and whether we can be a little bit innovative in the landscape architecture and site design to maybe create something that eliminates the need for wholesale clear cutting and regrading. Whether that's doing some sort of inventory of mature existing trees or designing little pockets of wooded space in strategic areas, I don't know, but that's just one of my concerns in reviewing this, kind of where we are at with this project right now.
I think it's a valid point.
I have looked at that. I'll take another look at if some areas that we may be able to save those trees. As I said, it's with the elevations from the groundwater and the roadway, that's where those contours are and we, you know, if we're forcing some of those trees in, they may not survive, you know, but there are areas that we might be able to save a few more trees and I'll take a closer look at that and mark it up.
Well, to that end, would you be able to push the limit of clearing on the four-eighty-nine side in so that you can perhaps save trees on the other side? You're creating a mound there, could you move the mound in so that you could save some trees along the border because that would make a difference as well?
Yeah, we should be able to save some trees in this area.
That might help a lot.
Yeah, I think just conceptually, it's like, we're still going to be subdividing larger lots than a conventional subdivision, but the question is whether those larger lots need to truly be developed in the sense of how the site work's going to take place. Could things be tightened up? I haven't really looked at, you know, you know much more about the sighting of the septic and the houses and the setbacks and everything, but I haven't looked into that in detail, but that's just, I guess, the question that I'm raising. Is there a way to tighten things and perhaps try to kind of hit the nail on the head with the purpose of this residential compound development?
I have another plan that I printed and left at the office, but if you're looking at this from countryway, from that perspective, you're not going to see a lot exchange particularly through here. This house isn't going to change, none of this, these woods aren't going to change. The only thing you can see is a twenty-foot wide drive. There's going to be trees remaining in this location and all the way along Todd's lot here. So coming this way, you're going to see trees in the driveway. Coming this way, I don't think you're really going to see a difference. You actually have to turn onto the driveway. So I think the general public, not the abutters, are not going to see a major change. It's not like a conventional subdivision. But the twenty-foot wide road, we're getting closer to it now that the fire departments are requiring twenty feet everywhere, so we can't narrow that anymore, which used to be the goal. But a conventional subdivision is twenty-two, twenty-four feet wide with granite curbs and so we've eliminated that, so we're going to have one access point here. So general public, I don't think you're going to see a major change here. From Aberdeen, we are going to keep woods along the perimeter and there's going to be a substantial tract of woodland on the easterly side that connects to the town property here. So there is going to be, you know, some screening and preserving of the rural character. I will look at, to try to, I don't know how much I can bring the buildings any closer based on the lot sizes, the setback requirements and the site constraints, that's going to be difficult, but I might be able to flag a few more areas like the one Karen just pointed out to save some woodland. Thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does that picture down below?
That is not it.
Okay, so.
I printed one just like that for this development.
It's changed since that one?
Yes.
You know, it's far easier to go in and just cut everything down. It really is, but we want you to be creative and make it work, okay?
I will take a look at it.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments from the board? And this is a public hearing, any comments from abutters? Yes, sir?
I'm in Kieriski fourteen Aberdeen Drive. We're in a butter to the rear of our property, rear of their property and for years that we've been there, we've had woods to view, which has been wonderful. And an original document, I think, proposed a fifty-foot buffer to the first lot or house and we're wondering, we keep hearing that that name may not have survived and just wondering where that is. And the second question is, I'm not using technical words, but there's a skating rink in there.
There's a pond.
Yeah.
There's a pond.
So how does that, I don't know where the houses are in relation to that, but it seems if you want to put foundations in and push the land down, that more water's going to come up and where you've got the pond, how is that going to affect then the weight of the foundations and houses going down on the land and creating a bigger pond and how does that then end up with satisfactory drainage, septic, et cetera?
All right, the fifty-foot buffer is still intact, is it not? And we're trying to get more against, up against the abutters on Aberdeen?
It's a fifty-foot setback.
Yep.
It's, it's not a buffer. We're actually proposing a twenty-foot permanent no-clear zone.
Can you point out where that is up there?
Sure. So this is the, can you see that tree line there? Would you bring it closer?
It's no structures in the fifty-foot.
Right, this is the proposed tree line. That's twenty feet off.
It's not to maintain it to rule character.
This is the stone wall, which is the lot line. The fifty-foot setback line isn't shown on this plan, but it's a, it's a structure setback. It's not a no-touch zone, it's, it's a residential project.
So isn't this house here in the fifty-foot then?
Yes.
Oh, you've moved them, okay. Okay. Can you just show people?
I have that.
Can you just show this gentleman where you're talking about so he can see it?
So this is the stone wall here. We've actually proposed a permanent easement for maintaining this woodland. I have put a note for selective clearing in cases any trees that are going to fall that need to be cleaned out or any nuisance trees, but the idea is that this is to remain woodland to provide you with a permanent buffer. And the width of that is, that's twenty feet. So residential to residential projects, there's no buffer requirement unless it's a high-density townhouse-type project, but single lot to single lot, no buffering requirements and zoning law. So Mr. Merritt is offering this and it's, it is the purview of the planning boards, it's a special permit, so this is the.
Right, will you be able to get more than twenty feet by, because the building and the driveway have to move up. It seems like you'll be able to get a little bit more than twenty feet in that area and that would mean less land disturbance, less probably, you know, grading that you have to do too.
So that, the, yeah, the top of the hill is one of the areas that we don't need to grade because it's elevated, right, so we may be able to get a little bit more than that, but we need to maintain some of the value of the lots for Mr. Merritt to be able to sell them as well. These lots, they will need some yard space and they're, you know, they're going to be, expensive in this town as you all know, so to have them restricted, severely restricted in the area could be a problem for value of those lots. I cannot speak with Mr. Merritt about extending that a bit. I don't want to speak for him on how much he's willing to move that at this point here, but it is something we will consider.
Is that part of the discussion?
My name is Brett Hara, I live next to a home number twenty. So what I just heard was twenty feet, there's no restriction, so there's no reason it's, you can't take all the trees down, right?
Well, that's an issue. That's an absolute issue because that happened in another residential compound district. Somebody wanted to put in a swimming pool and they cleared it and they weren't supposed to. So somehow, some way, we have to figure out a way to ensure that this twenty-foot or however deep it is remains the way it's supposed to remain so that some homeowner doesn't decide that, oh gee, I don't like those trees, they're coming down. It happened over on Evangeline as well. Somebody cleared right up to the stone wall and they were not supposed to.
So we've proposed an easement plan and this is clearly identified on the, in the development plans in this location here.
What type of an easement do you have there for it?
It's a, what do you call it? Twenty-foot, I call it a selective clearing zone, we can change the terminology in our... As I said, we want to maintain some woods in a buffer that's definitely advantageous to, for a selling point for the people who are going to buy these. They want a separation from the abutters as well. I also don't want to restrict them where they have nuisance trees back there and everybody's calling each other that they, they're not allowed to, you know, get a tree that fell in the middle of their yard.
That's, you know, carrying a little bit.
Yeah, so. There's a lot of that.
So I'm not sure an easement actually is the proper mechanism to restrict folks to doing that. It would seem as if there would need to be a condition of approval in your special permit, which runs with the land, so it operates as a deed restriction to that effect and I can volunteer that I could still include language in the actual, I think Karen, the document I sent, creating the association and so forth, I intentionally was trying to keep it a simple document and sometimes simple documents have power because they're easy to read. I can put some language in that document that speaks to the concept that the intention is to keep that area clear or free from disturbance.
If a tree falls off, falls, then, you know, it.
If there's a dead tree.
You move it.
Right, of course, I mean.
Right. That goes without saying.
Yeah.
But what we don't want is someone going in there with a chainsaw and taking every single one down.
Neither do we, which is why we included voluntarily this area. So I'm happy to brainstorm with Karen about ways that we could clearly convey that. Really, I think what you're trying to do is ensure that folks that buy these properties understand what their restrictions are and what they can't do. There's obviously a natural restriction with respect to matters that are within jurisdiction of the commission, the conservation commission, which you can't do, you know, within fifty feet for instance and some limitations within a hundred. That's a natural legal restriction, but I can look into that with Karen.
All right, yeah, we can, because obviously if a tree is going to fall, we don't want it to fall on anybody's house.
Right, right.
We don't want any, any damage done, so we can work on language so that.
And the woods should be cleared so that they're not a fire hazard either. I mean, you go around town and you see all of this dead stuff, you know it needs to be taken out of there, but not cutting down the trees.
Right.
It's not good for the forest, if you will.
We are proposing a fence, a split rail fence right along the edge of that as a demarcation as well.
I didn't even know that.
Around the perimeter.
Perfect. That would make a lot of sense.
On the, on the front side of the limit, right?
Yeah, on the front side, yes. It's surrounding the entire project. We offered that to the conservation commission on their side as well as a clear demarcation that.
Well, that'll help.
Yes. So the owners own that property, but there's a fence on their property?
Correct.
Okay.
And to answer the other question relative to the skating rink, there is no foundations in the groundwater, they're all above the groundwater and John Chesia made, asked us to separate out the stormwater that's running to there now and what's going to be running there after development and that we balance, increase the rate or the volume and we have provided that.
Where is the pond?
To the back of your house, right? Yeah.
It's right in the center here where these flags are. There are walking paths.
Of course, naturally.
I live right at ten Aberdeen, right at that pond and obviously I'm very concerned about the buffer and what the definition of a buffer is. Now that I'm gathering twenty feet is the plan, the current plan. I'm also more concerned now about the level of degradation that's taking place with these homes, especially their larger homes. I'm about five feet maybe above the woods, you know, it's a gray, so there's no flooding issue, yes, but if you put a house, you know, right up against that buffer zone and you raise it six or seven feet or eight feet, now I'm starting to worry about my land flooding. That's then a consideration about the abutters and the new drainage. That's been a consideration about the butters and the new drainage.
The proposed dwellings and road are down gradient of Aberdeen. We're just filling at the low end. The existing conditions of this lot, there is a low area in the middle of where we're proposing to develop where the stormwater sort of runs right now. We need to fill that to get separation for foundations. Those foundations are further away from Aberdeen. So short answer is, we are down gradient still.
Okay. All right.
So the water that went to that low spot, where's it going now?
It now goes to the infiltration basin. It's probably moved about 70 feet.
So it's just going this way?
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay. Anything further from the board, Karen?
No, so you don't need, everything's pitching down, so you don't need any swells to intercept water going around the site?
Correct.
Okay.
So, all right. You have some homework to do. And what is the schedule, Karen?
We were thinking that this would be continued till March 12. Is that okay with the applicant?
We were hoping to get in a little earlier than that. I'm wondering if you have time, maybe in February? Because I'm, you know, do we think it's going to close and be voted on the 12th, or?
Well, we're going to be doing a juggling act here, so I suppose they're here tonight. We could do them February 27th. And everybody who comes after next week, that's too bad.
There you go.
That's the way it works.
So the cookie crumbles?
That's the way it crumbles.
February 27th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the residential compound special permit for zero countryway, zero rear-countryway, and 483 rear-countryway until February 27, 2020, at 8:30 p.m. And to continue the time for action for filing with the town clerk until March 13, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very productive.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is. Just got to screw that up.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get some accounting done in the next 10 minutes?
Probably.
All right, well, a few minutes early, so should we?
It's not a public meeting.
Okay, so then we'll just keep on moving.
It's not a public meeting. It's a, it's a public forum. It's a public workshop. We do these to try to get, you know, to introduce articles that are, we're planning or thinking about planning for town meeting. So this is the first one that, for a while, there's been some zoning working on North Situate, and so our consultant from MAPC is here to talk a little bit about it and answer some of your questions, and then we can talk about, you know, how we're, what shape we are for town meeting.
Hi, everyone. Chris Kuschel from MAPC. It's nice to, nice to meet everyone and be here. As Karen said, we've been working for a while now on some zoning for the North Situate area. I'm sure as everybody knows, the big issue right now in North Situate that's really holding things back is the lack of sewer. But I think the town's idea with this was, for once sewer comes, we want to be sort of ready so that we have the regulations in place so that any development proposals that come forth will sort of meet with what the town's needs and desires are. And so that's what we've been attempting to do on this. This process, I think really you could trace it back to the, there was a visioning plan that was done several years ago by a private consultant that looked at this area, developed a vision for it. A couple of years passed, obviously, and part of that was due to the town working on this sort of framework that I'll talk about, the zoning, which you're probably familiar with, the VCN zoning. And now the town has received a grant from MAPC to work and develop the zoning specifically for North Situate. So our first task was reviewing this vision, and then we had an initial forum back in the last spring, in April. It was very well-attended. I think we had around 150 people or so attend that. And really, one of the main things we were trying to do was get feedback from the town reviewing the vision to see, you know, does it still hold? Are there changes? And also going maybe a couple steps further beyond that vision to specifically look at what would be relevant for the zoning. Brad, the former planning director, he developed, he came up with a committee of local stakeholders and landowners in North Situate to, really, we met a couple times to really kind of get into the gritty, nitty-gritty of the zoning itself. And then we took that draft, brought it to a forum back in November. The content is basically exactly what I'm presenting to you tonight, where we're really kind of going at a relatively high level of explaining sort of what are the concepts of this, within this zoning. We're here tonight. The next step, if things continue to move forward, would be a public hearing scheduled for February 13 before, in preparation for town meeting. So here's the study area, a few of the details. This is basically, this is the existing commercial district. The area, it's 36 acres, so it's not a huge area, but it's fair size. I think one of the things that is sort of important is thinking about its existing density in this area. Floor area ratio, as you probably know, is a measure of density. It's .09, which is extremely low for what you would expect to find in sort of a village-like setting. So I think it shows that there is some opportunity for redevelopment in this area. There's a smattering of houses. There's actually about 300 jobs. And I also think it's significant, 335 boardings for this fairly small station is relatively high. And I think it underscores the fact that people living what might be considered, you know, relatively far from the center of Boston are still commuting in, so there is that This restates from the original village visioning effort from several years ago, really what it, it articulates the fact that they want the neighborhood to be vibrant, to have a strong business core, to be revitalized through the redevelopment of underutilized parcels and vacant parcels, improvements to the public realm, enhancements to the parking, and other business development measures for this, for this area. So this is probably a little difficult to see. This is an aerial diagram of the existing view. This shows sort of an example of how that future in the, could play out, again, as seen from that original visioning effort. So in the sort of more outer parts of this village, there were opportunities seen for new types of housing, cottage clusters, which are the small types of homes that are a little bit more dense than typical single-family residences that can help support the commercial, improving the access and to the nature, natural amenities within the area. And then really revitalizing that core area through mixed use and new commercial development in the area. So I'll touch on a few of the key points from the first public forum that we heard. So what we did was for, maybe some of you were there, but we had some real-time online polling that we did as part of this, where people voted with their phones. Some people chose to do paper surveys that we inputted after. And we're able to get a lot of information very quickly through this method. And we asked a number of questions. Here's a few of them. One, first, we asked, should any new development in North Situate actually follow the traditional New England principles? That's not the case today. If mixed-use development goes in, that they are required to, but other types of development, commercial-only development does not need to. And I explained sort of what I meant by this traditional New England, by the top part of the diagram. So things like the traditional roof lines that you would find in a classic New England village with pitched drues, gable roofs, et cetera. The location of the building, where the building is brought closer to the sidewalk, and parking tends to be in the back of the building. And so that, as, if you put yourself in the place of a pedestrian, if you prefer to walk along a parking lot or right up against the shop front, so that's sort of what we're talking about there. The heights that are appropriate for, and the sort of various massing and articulation details that are appropriate for North New England villages. And you can see, I mean, it was overwhelmingly agreed, 89% agreed that that should be the case for future development. And one of the nice things that came out through this was, there was a strong consensus on all the questions. And some of the questions, we showed some buildings that everybody hated. So it was, one way or the other, people felt the same way. We also asked, should North Situate diversify its housing stock, introduce new housing typologies? Again, the same high percentage of people did agree with this. It maybe wasn't quite as strongly, but people did agree that new types of buildings such as mixed-use development, cottage clusters, multifamily, and townhomes all are appropriate for this area. We then showed a series of pictures. I'm just going to show two here of types of buildings to see, do you think that this would fit within North Situate? This was one of the most highly rated ones. Again, you can see overwhelmingly, 94% of people liked this building. I think you can probably see why. It's, it takes a large building and breaks it down into fairly small bays. It has the traditional roof lines, some nice articulation and details. The other one that I'll show is this one, which also had the same percentage overall of people liking it and loving it. Actually, more people loved this. And again, you can see the commonalities with the previous, the previous photo. This one is up on the North Shore, I believe, in Manchester. Okay, so now I'll touch on the actual zoning. So as I think you probably know, but in case not, this North Situate Village is intended to be part of the Village Center and Neighborhood Districts framework. So the town adopted this last spring. This is what is called the Form-Based Code, which I think is, it's an innovative approach, a little different from traditional zoning. I think it's actually a great approach, especially in mixed-use types of, or village-like center areas, because it puts a much greater emphasis on the actual design of the buildings, the urban design, and the public realm. This framework creates a number of standards. So there's essentially a menu of different building types that are allowed. There are design standards that apply for each of these building types. There's the open space requirements, your parking requirements, your affordable housing requirements if housing's being provided, et cetera. So that framework was really already sort of created before this, for North Situate to sort of fit into. So really, the goal was to take the information we heard through the public process and work within this framework to look specifically at North Situate. So first thing was looking at the boundaries. So we didn't really change the existing commercial boundary districts, but one of the nice things that this type of zoning allows for are sub-districts. So it allows for a greater nuance. So Green Bush, which was adopted also along with the VCN back in the spring, I think that has maybe like seven sub-districts. I forget exactly. This is a much smaller area. It doesn't need that sort of degree of separation, but we have two, two sub-districts, two non-contiguous areas, and I'll just touch on what those are. So the, sort of the gray part, which is the Village Center Sub-District, this, we're calling, this is sort of the commercial core of North Situate. One of the things that we heard, I think pretty loud and clear, was that we want North Situate to remain a business district. So, and it should retain that vitality and be a place that helps, helps small businesses thrive. And so to allow for that, really, the tool we have within this framework is thinking about what types of buildings are we allowing here and what types of buildings are we not allowing within this area. So we are allowing, of course, commercial buildings, because that's, it is a commercial district. We're also allowing what the framework calls live-work buildings. So it's essentially owner-occupied buildings, where the owner lives above with a shop front on the ground. And the other thing, there's a lot of single-story buildings there that are first-floor commercial, so we're introducing the opportunity to have mixed-use buildings, so where the ground floor is commercial, but now you introduce residents above. And presumably, these are the residents that can help support these local businesses. I think a lot of these businesses are probably going to be drawing a local crowd. I think it's less likely you're going to be having people coming from many different communities, so I think we have to really try and maximize the opportunity to increase the foot traffic here. We're not allowing residential-only buildings here, and I think that's wise, and the reason being, we know that the demand for housing in our region is just so high that if you allow that in this commercial core, that's probably what's going to start taking over. So, that being said, residents are important. It takes a lot of residents to support small businesses. So now in the more outer parts, we are now introducing additional types of building types within this area. So we still are allowing the same, the commercial, mixed-use, live-work buildings. We're also allowing the cottage clusters, in which these are already defined within the, within the bylaw. Single-family attached homes, in other words, townhomes. Multifamilies, but that's through a special permit, so there is still some, you know, discretion from the planning board in terms of whether that makes sense, given the context. And then the, sort of this typology, which, I'll be completely frank, I haven't actually seen this done, but it's within the, the bylaw, what's called a gas-backwards building, and essentially flips the building and where that, the service portion is. So again, it tries to create a better street edge for pedestrians, even though this is clearly an auto-centric type of use. So that was, that is the overview of the zoning. I'm happy to try and answer some questions. We've had Brad, sorry.
Could you go back just one?
Yeah. This one? Sure.
Yeah, just the gas-backwards thing?
Yeah.
Where did, that seems like very specific, right? So where did that come from? What was driving that?
Yeah, there is a gas station there today, and so the thought was, if that owner wanted to redevelop the property but still maintain that use, they could, they could have that.
Was it a thought that, that sort of in this development, there would be sort of a limit on those kinds of facilities? In other words, you don't want three out of four of them in there, right?
That's a good question. I have to check if we made that by right or by special permit, but I think that's a good point, that we could make it through a special permit.
Maybe a special permit, right?
And I don't care if you have that in front of you or not, but I think, I think it makes sense to be through a special permit if we haven't done that, and we can make that change. And what I was going to say was, I, I've had in the past Brad with me to sort of tag-team these, so I will do my best to answer the questions. Some of the things he would, might be a little stronger on, so I might have to get you the answer, if I don't know off the top of my head.
Ben?
Yeah, I just had a question on the, you kind of alluded to it, but on the, I guess the inner district of North Situate, you're kind of alluding to the fact that if the market was allowed to do what the free market wants, you would end up with kind of way too much residential housing right in the business district? So I was wondering if there's going to, if you have any recommendations, or there's some sort of analysis to establish the ratio for mixed-use development in terms of what would, what is going to be residential versus commercial? And I only ask that because that's a concern I've had and I've heard from other people regarding some of the mixed-use developments that have happened in our other, in our Green Bush area, which is bylaw, this new zoning, kind of modeled similar to, is that we're a little light kind of on the commercial or retail or, you know, business use compared to the retail, and I'm wondering, or, sorry, compared to the residential? And I'm wondering how we can kind of analyze that.
Yeah, well, I guess, could you explain maybe a little bit the concern? If, if it's mixed-use, that means there's still the commercial, and it's presumably it's commercial today, but just a single story. So you're still maintaining the same amount of commercial, but you're adding, you're just adding developments, but you're not taking anything away. So yes, the balance changes, but not the, not the sort of base level of.
I guess in the Green Bush, in the Green Bush developments, there's a minimum percentage of, right, of business use that's established. And I guess I've heard that question, is whether we should have a little bit more business use to constitute a real. use to constitute a real mixed-use development versus the proportion of residential to.
Are you talking about like expanding the district? Or you're talking?
No, sorry, on per, on a per-development basis, on a per, per property.
Oh, per property.
You can't have one office space in the bylaw.
Yeah, one little office, and then 90% is residential.
Residential. We had that happen in Green Bush.
But now, just to clarify, was that the Green Bush utilizing the previous zoning, the VB?
Yes.
So I believe the way that this takes care of that is, and again, I don't know, since I didn't work on the broader framework, but the definition in the standards for mixed-use development, I believe the entire ground floor.
I think, yeah, the ground floor has to be.
So you can't just put like a little corner, you know, 2,000 square foot, like, and call it mixed-use.
Right, there wasn't any residential on the ground floor.
Right, there wasn't.
It's all, it's all commercial there.
In, in the mixed-use, in the, in the specific, in the specific mixed-use buildings, there's no residential on the ground floor.
Well, even in the residential, the ground floor is essentially the garage, right?
I think what we're trying to aim for in North Situate, just, and I think I've said this once before, 30 years ago, we had a fire, and Wilder Brothers, which is on Countryway, was destroyed and rebuilt. And if we had had sewer, the owner would have put apartments above it.
Right.
And I think that if that is allowed, we really only have five property owners up there. There were a few spots, but most of them are owned by four or five. So by putting this in place, let's take Ford's building, which is where the dry cleaners and what have you, if he were able to go up, but would really like us to have him move it forward, except for the old antique historic original train station. So there are things, but we have to get this in place before sewer comes, or it's going to be a free-for-all up there. And we don't want that. But as long as, and we already have it, it's all business, commercial on the first floors, and apartments or condos on the second and third floors, I think that would work.
Now, I, just to the question, I did just, as we were talking, find the definition for mixed-use, and it does say ground floor.
Right.
Commercial. So you can't get around it by, you know, this definition. It is explicit that the ground floor will.
I guess my question for North Situate then was, yeah, is that, which is like, that's a form-based thing, right? Just the ground floor has to be. So my question was whether there's analysis, further analysis of the actual ratio of residential to, to the, you know, I don't know, that's, I don't know what the advantages or disadvantages would be, but.
I don't think we've done any more analysis than that.
We haven't done additional analysis. I guess I would argue that as long as you maintain that ground floor retail, maximizing them or residence actually just enhances the commercial. And you're going to be limited, there's the parking limitations, there are a number of limitations.
Well, you also want to tie those residents to the train station, too, right? To be able to commute to work and all that kind of stuff, right? So you want to take advantage of that.
And we know that, generally speaking, the people who are attracted to mixed-use buildings are either, tend to be empty nesters now, they're downsizing, kids are out of the house, or young professionals before they have kids that are taking the train. You're not, it's less likely you're going to see many families in these mixed-use buildings. It's going to be generally people taking the train.
It's transitional.
Or starter, yeah.
Yes. Yep, it is. Anyone in the audience?
So that would be starter or finisher?
There you go. Not necessarily in between.
So office can be on some upper floors, too, in a mixed-use.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're not limited, right?
Commercial, specifically on the, on the ground floor.
Right, yes.
Karen?
I'm from field 39, Serb side. I just, to Ben's point, I think, I mean, this is visionary, and because the market for housing is so strong, I think that's why we're seeing more of that, in my opinion, in the Green Bush area. But that will in turn, with more density, will become a more attractive place for small businesses to go. So I think that the framework's solid, and we're going to get there. And I think putting it in place with the anticipation of sewer is exactly what I would love to see the board move forward on.
Well, we're hoping to do that.
It would be nice to have an affordable component of all of this as well.
Affordable. There are affordable standards, that's part of the framework. I forget what the threshold is when it kicks in, how many units, but it's, it's.
Similar to what it was before. There's a whole section on affordability in the bylaw now that was put in under the VCN. So I think it's still similar to what it was before, but I think it ups it to 20% versus 15%.
Quite aggressive. I hope it's not too aggressive, because of clearly, we want affordable housing, but we don't want it to hinder development, but hopefully it'll be okay. I think you'll know fairly soon if it's too high and it's hindering development, you can always adjust it later.
Karen?
I have a question about, there's, you know, there's a big number of parcels within these zones that are town-owned property. Does that get impacted, how does that get impacted, if at all? Or they just, it just falls under the same?
Unless the town wants to sell it.
Falls under the same zoning, it wouldn't change the zoning.
So the town chose to sell a parcel to a private developer, then they would have to meet zoning?
Yeah. But also, my concern with these affordable units, it has to be done in such a way that the paperwork isn't so onerous as to prevent them from becoming affordable units. In my business, where I am in North Situate, which may or may not be Situate's answer to halfway housing, I think the average amount of rent is $850, which is really inexpensive. And they would qualify as affordable units, but.
Right, they had to meet the state definition for the local action units, which is what these kind are, they're all, they're done under the local action lip program, and you have this 80% of the mean area income, et cetera. And it's, you know.
It's onerous. So.
It is, but we are getting some affordable units.
Right, yes, we are.
Under these developments.
The new ones.
Right.
But not, not the ones that exist now. And I know for sure that once the sewer comes, the building I'm in is gone.
And that would be a new development?
New development, so.
And you think we'll have an opportunity for some affordable units?
So some will be de-restricted?
Yes. All right.
It's the same number, less, when you have eight units, you're creating eight units, that's when you have your fir, you need your first affordable unit. So under seven and under, you don't need the affordable units.
I would recommend that the town monitor and see, because if you start getting a lot of seven-unit buildings, then that's showing that, you know, something's not maybe working.
Right.
It's not penciling, it's not worth it enough for them.
Karen?
One other question is the, is there any, has there been thought given to creating a bike lane from the station through the pedestrian gap corridor? I mean, we have sidewalks that pass the village, but in the village itself, you know, if you take your bike to the station, you're in traffic getting back. So I don't know if that's something the board wants to think about. I don't know if it's in the purview or not, but.
Well, mostly they ride on the sidewalk. Unless they're, some of them go to the train, but very few. Mostly it's walkers.
That's my point, is if we had a dedicated, if we had a safer way to get from the station, say down to Ganna, where the sidewalk is more substantial, it might encourage it more than.
I'm not surprised how many people walk down. I know.
This news, the North Situate zoning, although it's modeled after the other bylaw, would embrace kind of the complete streets.
So, yes, the answer is yes. However, the truth is, that really only comes into play if.
Redeveloped.
If there's new roads, right? On your existing roads, it's the town's responsibility. I don't know if the town is a complete streets community. If you are not, I strongly recommend it, because that gives 300 grand a year. You are.
I believe we are.
So I don't know, again, as part of that process, if, if bike lanes were part of that, one of the priorities. But I think really that that comes down to your DPW working to see, is there the room to put in bike lanes? A lot of times, you have lanes that are very wide, you know, you don't need them to be 16 feet wide, if that's what they are, you can use four feet of that and strip a button out bike lane. But it really tends to be, that's the responsibility usually of the DPW.
I think, I think when we have sewer come through, it'd be really good to be mindful of that in partnership with the DPW. If these properties get redeveloped, there'll be an opportunity to, to be dangerous that are a little more complete-street friendly and pedestrian-friendly. And you're right, it has to be, that's, that's the answer. It's the town's responsibility, but there's an opportunity.
There's, there's a whole thing in here about the public ground design.
You're right, and.
And including bike lanes. In the Village Center Street, which is a type 2, we listed that as optional.
Correct. But again, that, that really only applies if they create new roads. Like, it wouldn't make sense, for example, if, if you developed one property, you wouldn't want, you know, let's say you have 50-foot of frontage, you're not going to put a bike lane for 50 feet of frontage. It doesn't make sense. It, it's really if a developer comes in and creates a new road, that's what that whole section actually applies for.
I would say yes and no, right? Is that the design, the concept that we're laying out here is a design concept that the town can follow?
Absolutely. Correct.
To redesign the roadway there.
Yes, yes, you're right.
And it doesn't mean that each developer has to do it that way, right? But it means that it could be our roadmap to creating the overall space that we're intending here.
Yes, I fully agree. I was referring to the obligations of the zoning.
Yeah, no, I did that.
Okay, we will take all of this under advisement, and we will go from there.
I'll be in touch with you.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Does anybody, I mean, yeah, guys, I'll get that. It's basically the VCN framework with specific conditions for North Situate.
One question on that, would we, have, are there differences between what we did at Green Bush and what we're posing here?
Sure, I can, I can answer that.
There's a couple of them, yeah.
There were some slight modifications. So originally, when it was adopted, each sub-district had its own heights and all these different standards. And it was actually in conflict with another part of the bylaw, which had its own height and standards for each building type, and it's which one actually works. So what the consultant decided to do was put all of those design standards essentially by building type, which I, I think is an okay approach. But the, the challenge then is that when you want to sort of, let's say, calibrate it, because Green Bush might be different from, from North Situate, it becomes a little trickier. But I think we found a way to do that, and the way that we did that was to, there was a, within the section that specifically talks about each of the sub-districts, we talk about the allowable building types, and then we have some modifications, such as, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, we reduced the open space percentage requirement. And the reason for that is we have much smaller parcels in North Situate, and we're trying to allow for development to take place. And if we make it so onerous between the parking requirements and the open space requirements, it could be infeasible. And a commercial probably doesn't need much open space, frankly. So that was one of the changes we made. Another change was the, each building type has its own setbacks. And from a design perspective, I disagree with that approach, and from the visual preference survey that we went, and people kind of, it doesn't matter what the building is, having the same setback, it helps create a harmonious sort of feel to the neighborhood, and that's what came through the visual preference survey. So we said regardless of what the setback is for each individual building, in North Situate, we have, we're having consistent setbacks. There might have been a few other small ones, I can't recall off the top of my head, but that, that was, that was the nature of the modifications. I'm happy to try and.
So when you say consistent setbacks, so.
Front setbacks, I meant, by the way.
The front setbacks are basically zero. They're, they're on the street, on the sidewalk, I mean.
Correct, yeah, the minimum, yeah. And then there's an allowance, because again, in some cases, it might make sense to have front patio seating, or, you know, for cafe seating, and so that allows for that.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Now we have the signed bylaw. So exciting.
Signed bylaw. All right, so we have hired a consultant to work on the signed bylaw based on the results of what happened at the last town meeting. As we have indicated to you, the signed bylaw needs to be revised to be, to be legal. You can't, you can't have a bylaw that regulates content. And so what we are going to, our consultant is working on a bylaw right now, but she has provided, provided you a memorandum of some of her questions that she has and wanted some input before she, you know, before she fixes it up. I mean, basically, she's going along a lot of the same lines as we went along last time, but she's just trying to make it fit in, fit in legally.
And we just got this today.
So we're going to be, we just got this today. So, I mean, we have to do something with the political signs, we have to do something with the civic and church group signs. So the current thinking is that everything gets really into a temper, temporary signs. So you regulate temporary signs, and you regulate permanent signs.
She's gone beyond the, she raised around content-based regulation, right? She's proposing to reorganize.
She's proposing to reorganize and, based on the input that we gave her, try to fix it once and fix it for all, so that it would be, you know, along with current legal and She's saying that sign, signed bylaws usually list exemptions. Is that something that the board wants to, wants to do? Do you want a section specifically devoted to exemptions?
And what kind of exemptions?
What might be an example of an exemption?
Sometimes you have community temporary signs that would be, you know, you know, exempted, non-commercial flags, that kind of things. She's going to be here, she's going to be here at the zoning public hearing. She has to be pretty careful about that. And she's been doing this for a while, so she is familiar with it. She's going to definitely be here at the public hearing. We, we kind of just put her under contract a week and a half ago, and so we're trying to move this really quickly through. I just, we just got this today, and so I'm just trying to, to go from, from her memo.
I think she raises a number of good issues in terms of just cleaning up, sort of, you know, having more specificity about sign.
So it seems like the board wants to go with that specificity to clean it up and make it more understandable and rearrange?
Yeah, I think the exemption, I guess I would have to hear what she's thinking about exemption, because it seems like that's a slippery slope back to content-specific regulation again, right? So we probably have to be.
No, I think it's, I think it's for, you know, some transportation ones, you know, things, things like that. I think she can be pretty specific about, and not have them.
That's what I'm saying.
And not have them content-based. So it seems like we want a section devoted to temporary signs.
And also, I think we're, and exceptions. Exceptions. And also, I think, and exceptions, expressly prohibited.
Oh, I see. She was talking about things like no trespassing signs.
Mm-hmm. And again, with the materials that I sent you this morning, sorry she didn't send it to me till this mor, you know, this morning. I included Reed versus Gilbert, and I included some current planning thinking on signs as well that she gave us.
All right, well, it is food for thought. And she will be, can we just email you what our thoughts are on this?
Yeah, if you, if you email me by Monday, because I want to get her working on this, because if you think about it, the timeline is very short. We actually, we're going to be breaking the zoning public hearing up into two public hearings, and the signs are going to be on February 27th, to give her enough time to develop the bylaw.
All right.
I think it's, I think it's worth it to do it that way.
I agree.
I'm just trying to remember what some of the, I guess, arguments for voting down the last iteration at town meeting were, because I just want to...
I don't think there was really.
There really wasn't. It was just...
More administrative, they weren't often in the process, or...
I think the language that we used was as, you know, vague as sort of the specificity that we had before, right?
Right.
And it seemed to me most people were sort of just objecting to, you know, what does that mean, kind of thing, right? I don't think anybody really understood this discussion about content-related regulation.
Yes, I agree with you, and that's what will, I mean, that's what will be made clear, that we need to do this because you can't control the content, you can regulate the size, but not the content. And I think it's all an education...
Yeah, that's the most important.
And so how we present it is going to be the key, and like you have said before, when we're trying to get the advisory board on, on top of this ahead of time, is going to be key. But it's, it's an education thing.
Yeah. But this is, this is kind of a two-part thing. One is it's addressing that particular issue, right?
It is addressing that issue.
But the second thing is it's sort of providing an overall sort of reorganization and a, sort of a step improvement in the overall sign bylaw.
Yes, yes. And which many towns in, all across the United States are dealing with these issues, and many towns will be bringing signed bylaws to their spring town meetings.
Including Norwell.
Including Norwell.
Anything else from the board? Okay.
Okay.
All right, now we have Mr. Vogel.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening.
Nice to see you all.
And you as well.
Thank you.
An update on the water in your basement?
I'm sorry? Oh, the water in the basement fortunately percolated right into the dirt floor.
Well, that's a good thing about dirt floors.
That's exactly right.
Yep. I have that way to go.
That's exactly right. I am wondering, to start the discussion tonight, if I could read the letter that I sent to the board probably a month ago now, explaining the sort of context of this proposal, and why I think it's a good idea, and the reason that, you know, I can kind of came up with it, and I'm considering it. And it would also perhaps educate a little bit anyone who's watching on YouTube, and get them ready to consider it as well.
So, Bob, before you start, we gave everybody copy of the letter, I believe, and the matrix and your, and the revised wording.
Right. Okay.
So I'll paraphrase a little bit of this, but basically what I have explained to you or put out for your consideration is that one issue that's come up many times when I've been in the building department the last five years is the presence of abandoned and derelict structures that are blighting otherwise very respectable and well-kept neighborhoods. And these present to the residents obvious safety hazards, shelter for illicit activities, potential for fires, either accidental or set, rodent infestation, et cetera. One of the chief factors contributing to the presence of such structures is the wording of a particular bylaw that we have, Section 830, repair and restoration of non-conforming structures and uses. Basically, this section says, in the case of a damaged or destroyed, non-conforming structure, and that would be a structure on a lot that is smaller than the current zoning permits, or a structure closer to the lot line than the current zoning setback requirements permit, that sort of thing. The owner, in that case, of destruction or damage must apply for a building permit within three years and complete the work of repair or reconstruction within four years. Once that time period is passed with no action, under the bylaw, repair or reconstruction is no longer allowed. In Section 810, as opposed to 830, there's also some wording that is quoted as unless or until abandoned are not used for a period of two years or more, that applies to the same situation. Ironically, the original intent of this bylaw was to incentivize owners to restore their property to good condition in a timely manner. However, in too many cases, the result has turned out to be diametrically opposite to that goal. Due to a variety of circumstances, death or illness, extended probate, divorce, prolonged absence from the area, to name a few, there are multiple damaged or destroyed properties in town from which the owner has simply walked away, or in effect are simply being ignored. Once the prescribed time is passed, such properties cannot be restored or reused and become essentially valueless. In most cases, the nonconformity, as I said, is one of lot size or lot frontage, and even the lot itself cannot be reused, except perhaps to add the area to an abutting lot. So it's a very difficult situation for owners of such properties, and a very difficult situation for the abutters and neighbors of such properties. What I intended by this proposed revision is to remove the present time limit for repair or reconstruction of non-conforming, damaged or destroyed, single or two-family dwellings existing as of the adoption of the change and going forward. If we do that, then the properties right now, which are sort of in limbo, have, have gone through the time period where they can, under the present bylaw, be legally repaired or reconstructed, now revert to a situation where they have value, they are attractive, either to the owners or perhaps to people that would, developers, to whom the owners would sell the properties, and can be restored, and are no longer the sort of light on the neighborhood that they now, they now represent. At the same time, I wanted to distinguish between residential properties, single and two-family, and structures with other uses in them, commercial, multifamily, that sort of thing, simply because I think in that case, most of those situations, not only is the structure non-conforming as to area regulations, but may well be non-conforming as to the use within the district it's located. So for instance, a commercial structure within a residential district. And it may not be the best way to do it, but I think keeping the present restrictions, if you will, in place for those category, that category of structures, will at least incentivize in the right direction, which is actually to gradually weed out those uses that are incompatible with the surrounding residential zoning district where they are located.
Egypt Garage comes to mind.
Egypt Garage is a good example. Egypt Country Store is a good example. You know, there are, there are a few. And I must say, there's not many of the so-called blighted residential structures that have been identified. I mean, there's some poster children, if you will, that we hear a lot, a lot about. The principal one, I guess, would be 81 Surfside Road. But, you know, where they do exist, and they are a real thorn in the side of the people who live around them, and rightly so. And so I think this, this is, it's a curable situation that, that we've got, and should be, should be looked at.
Let me ask you this, and see if I understand this correctly. Let's take, for example, a house was destroyed in the storm of '78 down on Hammerock Beach.
Mm-hmm.
And the people came in six years later and wanted to rebuild, and they were not allowed. That wouldn't happen even now, would it, under this?
They would still not be allowed under the present zoning bylaw, the way it's written. If we instituted the changes that are proposed, it would be allowed.
So does that mean that Stevie Bedjowkin can build his house on the 3,000 square foot lot?
The wording that I'd, I'd like to see in here would, would be houses existing as of the adoption of this bylaw, already amendment there, too. So it would be today going forward that the bylaw would apply.
So then the house on Hammerock Beach could not be rebuilt?
Unless there's a substantial part of it still remaining.
Gone.
Yeah. No, anything gone would, would be gone. I mean, the intent would be not to allow that, not to allow the houses along townway that were blown away in '78 to, you know, be recreated, not to, not to have to revisit the situation of an old foundation in the woods that, you know, dates from the 1800s, you know, that, that sort of thing. I'm really trying to fix what's sitting, sitting and staring us in the face today.
Now, could the Egypt Country Store, not Egypt Country Store, Egypt Garage, could they just rebuild anyway without this?
There's a debate on whether or not that use has been discontinued. Depending on who you talk to, it has not been used for many, many years, or perhaps it's had occasional, very occasional use, and that puts it in a different category. That's probably more a legal discussion than a zoning discussion.
And the Egypt Country Store?
Same thing. Right now, I mean, it's, it's, it's been used up to a very, fairly recent date. One interesting thing that I think could be achieved here is that the restriction on time of, you know, time to get your permit, time to do your work for that kind of property, you know, that's a non-conforming use, is still limited to the three- and four-year period or the two-year period, depending on which, which bylaw section you look at. But if you decided, for instance, to convert the Egypt Garage into residential, you know, and I'm not sure you could because of, you know, the wetland situation, all of that.
I'm sure there's a 21E there.
Yeah, well, there, there may well be. So perhaps that's not, that's not, say, you were going to take down the Egypt Country Store and put up a house on that lot, that would be permitted under my proposed changes. So if you change to a conforming use, then, you know, your time period to do that is not limited.
Well, then you'd have to conform as well.
You would have to conform as well, right? You know, and everything else that...
Non-conforming lot, and you wanted to do it.
Does that lot, do you have to put a house on?
Would you have to go to the zoning board?
Yes, yeah. I mean, this doesn't take any of those sort of hoops away. You still have to jump through those.
So when we discussed this last time, I guess we talked about making that a special permit, but that's not really what you want to do.
I would consider that if the board felt it was a good idea. I'm going to discuss this with the ZBA a week from tonight, so, you know, I'm very open to input from all directions. I don't, I don't say this is the, you know, the final version of this situation thing.
Could you sort of explain this?
Sure.
Make sure I'm understanding how you're differentiating this.
Yeah, what I tried to do is differentiate between, obviously, what's in place now and what is proposed, but also within that to differentiate between residential, one and two-family, and other uses.
So is the, the top section of your matrix applies to what? I'm just trying to understand. You've got, it looks like you've got sort of multiple sections here, right?
Right.
So if this section is different than this section, what's the difference in the structures here?
Yeah, the difference, at least the intended difference, was that the top list, if you will, applies to structures which are in use, permitted by right in the zoning district where they're located. So that would basically be one and two-family homes anywhere in town, and might, and would be, in the commercial districts, would be other types of structures as well. The reason for repair or restoration, the existing bylaw language is pretty specific. Damaged or destroyed by accidental causes, my thought is that's a little too specific, and that damaged or, damaged to a degree that is uninhabitable encompasses a little bit wider area and is more specific at the same time. So you don't have to come in and argue about, you know, what is damaged and what, what is damaged under the, under the definition of the bylaw, or unusable or destroyed. And so that, as I said, kind of removes the need to try and define accidental, and further defines damaged, just taking away some potential argument points that I don't think need to exist.
Okay. And so what this particular section essentially does is it eliminates the time limit incentive, if you will, to rebuild for one and two-family homes?
Yes, yes. I mean, that's, that's putting it kind of in the opposite direction, but it does eliminate that incentive time limit.
Right.
And it opens up the possibility, then, on the other end, of doing this within, you know, an unspecified time limit.
Right. And I think that was the thing we were struggling with last time, is how do we maintain the incentive, but also give those who go past that timeframe an avenue to rebuild?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a very good thought. I don't, I don't know how to achieve it exactly, but again...
If we could, I'm just trying to follow this through. So let's say we have a non-conforming structure that's in use, it's a one or two-family home, they don't rebuild it in three years, would that, if they wanted to, if we structured it in a way that there was a path to do it, would that mean the path would be, I have to go back to the zoning board to get approval to, to rebuild a non-conforming use?
It could, it could be within the first two, it'd be three years, actually, the way it's written. If you move forward within that time period, you know, you can move forward by right.
That's what I'm saying, by right. That's what I'm saying, by right, you could, is that what you can do now?
No.
By right? Do you still have to go to the zoning board?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's the, that's the typical path.
Right.
And then, after that, they would still have to go to the zoning board, but could we create a special permit?
I, I don't see, I don't see why not.
That would allow somebody, or somebody who wanted to buy it, to come in to the planning board to get a special permit to rebuild?
Yeah, I, I don't see any reason that you couldn't.
Yeah. I'm just trying not to remove the incentive to rebuild.
Right, but think about it, if, if typically, if it's not rebuilt within that time period, there's a reason.
Right.
You know, and it's a reason that the owner can't really overcome or doesn't have control over. And so, you know, an incentive might not have much effect, I guess, is what I'm saying. I don't think you needed incentive unless it, for some kind of circumstance, it's just difficult or impossible, you know, because of that circumstance.
I think you want some type of incentive. I mean, just in case we get another storm, and we have a bunch of houses-
Right. Now, there's a house on Country Way.
Mm-hmm.
Just down from Harbor Way.
Okay.
That looks like who did it and left. And people are living there, and she's a widow and with children, the children, whatever. The barn finally fell down.
Yeah.
Now-
I know the one you mean.
Okay, everybody does.
Yeah.
So, let me see if I understand this correctly. What if she decided to sell that house, even though it has been in disrepair since whenever, would somebody be able to?
Yes, absolutely. I don't think you can, you can take a dwelling that's being, that's being inhabited-
Right. Well, and the question, whether or not it is-
And, you know, put it in one of these categories.
Okay, so that would not fall into this particular category at all?
No, no.
Unless the Board of Health declared it uninhabitable or something, right?
Well, right, unless it were at a point where that, that happened, and, and the town or the building department in this case was, you know, tempted to institute condemnation proceedings, but that, that just doesn't happen.
Okay. But you are assuring me that one forty-seven Turner Road will never be rebuilt?
Difficult to do that, and-
It's been adjudicated many times.
I, I, absolutely. And I would say the, the court has, has the final say. If it ever came up again, it would probably end up in the same place, and I would say the decision would likely be, be the same.
Which one's that? Is that the one you were talking about before?
I, I don't think anything in this change, and I, I would, I would agree with you, and I would want to make certain, as certain as I could of that, that I, I don't think it's gonna change the situation for that particular parcel.
Well, as you've cited, the houses that went south on Townway or Peggy Beach or wherever, Man Hill, Egypt, Oceanside, they're gone.
Right.
So-
Right, I mean, it's very specific in the wording that this applies to situations that are present when the bylaws accepted, signed off by the Attorney General's Office, and not to anything prior to that.
Then, that resolves that issue.
As far as I can tell, it does.
We can only hope.
That was certainly the re, the reason that that wording was put in there, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Three years is absolute, you know, as you can, if there's a court case or there's something else ties it up, it's that-
I, I, I think the tolling, which is what you're talking about, Bill, probably does apply, but that's not mentioned anywhere in the bylaw language.
I mean, sometimes these properties are tied up in an estate-
Right.
That can go on-
For a long time.
For a very, very long time.
Right.
I, I, I think this is a great idea. I have no problem with that. I am just afraid there's somebody out there that's gonna just slip through there, which was not the intention of why.
I, I agree. Unintended consequences are always a danger.
Yeah. My, my biggest, I, I think I agree with you, Rebecca, like, the intent of this, I get. My concerns at this point are kind of related to definitions, particularly how we define, like, abandoned, derelict, uninhabitable, unusable. I'm sure there's something in the building code that helps define that from, from your end.
There is, but-
But, 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 yeah, like, tho, those definitions, to me, are important. And then, the one other thing I find important is the definitions of repair, restoration, and also the term reconstruction. What I'm, obviously, the intent of this section of the bylaw is to try to incentivize people to restore, rebuild their non-conforming buildings, and if not, then you can't keep your non-conforming status, you have to conform to current zoning. I understand the, the case where it's a non-conforming lot, and I think that is certainly a concern, like, with the potential illegal taking or, or whatever, but if we're talking-
That, that's generally, however, what, what we've, what we're trying to address.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not the, that's not the unusual situation, that's the usual situation.
Sure. And, and I, and I think I can be on board with that. What, what I'm concerned was the definition, I guess, more of reconstruction. I'm wondering if, would this allow somebody to do a raise and reconstruct, and then go get a Section Six finding at ZBA and potentially, you know, do something that might, you know, obviously, I'm ZBA, that's up to ZBA, whether it's, you know, substantially more detrimental or not, but I would like to see the, I guess, that non-conforming use the same as it was, or that, sorry, not you, it's a non-conforming structure, so the same massing or the same location or something like that, unless it's going to be in full conformance with zoning. I wouldn't want to see something where we have something that's fifty percent or a hundred percent larger-
Yeah.
-that's raise and reconstruct. This, I'm sorry, this is very confusing to say what I'm saying, does, does anyone-
I know what you're saying.
I think, I think I know what you're saying, yeah.
You don't want the house to double in size when they rebuild it, or, or-
Correct. So, I, I guess I would want definitions of how reconstruction would work, and, and what the procedure is there. Would it go to ZBA for Section Six, and is it gonna be a special permit from planning board? That's, that's, how that's defined and how that's done administratively is my biggest concern at this point.
But the other house that you're talking about, that might not, might not have that same feeling with the one, if there was a, the woman was older and sick, where's that house, the other?
There's one on Holly that was damaged by a fire, probably twenty, fifteen years ago now.
The one in, I think you were talking about the one in.
No, the one on Holly is the one I'm talking about.
Right.
I, I don't know that one, but that might be a different story. You know what I mean? Like, that's why I'm thinking a special permit, 'cause every one is a little bit of a different story.
Mm-hmm.
Depending on where it is.
Is that house vacant on Holly? Or does somebody leave it?
Oh, yes. No, it's vacant. It's been vacant for, since, since the fire.
And are taxes being paid on it?
Uh, yes. I checked that. Taxes are up to date. And the other interesting thing is, it's assessed as though it were habitable, and the lot is assessed as though it were a building lot.
Shocking. I said that, didn't I?
All right. Food for thought.
Definitely food for thought. And, you know, all of these are great comments, and, you know, we'll, we'll work on it. Like I say, I'm gonna present this to the ZBA in a week, and, you know, based on their comments and these comments, we'll see what we can, we can do with it.
Okay. Bill, do you have anything you'd wanted to say?
No, thank you for the matrix, though.
Are we all set? Okay.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, one other thing, just, just throw into the-
To the mix?
The shredder.
Sure. Go for it.
Is that the kind of thing that Ann was talking about, which is a house that gets destroyed in a blizzard of seventy-eight that you don't really want built.
Right.
Right? This doesn't address that at all, right?
Only in that it tries to limit, the intent at least, is to limit the application of this to what's existing as of the adoption of this new language.
Right. And the other thing is, if you, if you were along the ocean there and had a non-conforming lot, house, one of the things, if, if somebody built, rebuilt a non-conforming structure that you'd probably want to allow, which we do now, is to raise it above.
Oh, well, you would have to. I mean, obviously, when you rebuild, you've gotta meet FEMA regulations, you've gotta meet Mass Building Code regulations, and that would indicate you've gotta be above, above flood level.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that would all, none of that would change, certainly. I mean, the only other change that I was, that, you know, was kind of along the lines of what we're talking about, is right now, the present bylaw says the new construction must be less non-conforming than what's there, or what was there. And the only slight change to that is if it, if it changed to must not be more non-conforming, it would allow you to use the existing foundation in case your house burnt down, even though that foundation might be too close to your lot line, something like that. It's a small point, but might be worth, you know, considering.
Well, there was a foundation down on Jericho that was empty for years.
Mm-hmm.
And it went before the planning board, I'm sure Bill remembers, it was an Irishman, and he wanted to put in three kitchens. And it finally got built.
Yeah.
Finally. It went on for a long, long time.
Yeah.
That was fifteen years ago. Oh, well.
Well.
Thank you, Bob.
So, what would be the process going forward with, with this board in terms of comments and reworking? It's the first time I've, I've, you know, been through this.
Well, ideally, you're gonna have this finalized by next week, because we're going to be, we're gonna be looking to put a legal ad in the paper, send the legal ad to the paper by January twenty-fourth for a February thirteenth public hearing.
Okay, well, that's, that's a clarification, then. So, at that point, when you place the legal ad, the wording has got to be just exactly what the wording is going to be on the warrant of town meeting.
Right. I mean, it can be changed, it can't-
The public meeting can change.
The public meeting can change it, but you can't, you can't, you can't increase the scope.
Oh, right, right.
You can decrease the scope, but you can't increase the scope.
Okay, all right. So, I'm, I'm not talking about that, but I think, you know, the kinds of things that we're discussing here tonight, and I'm sure will be a similar discussion next week, are kind of nuanced a little bit. They're not changing the scope or the intent or anything, it's just, you know, what's the best way to achieve it? What's the best way to close any potential loopholes, that, that sort of thing? And that might, it might take a while to really get that nailed.
Right, so as long as, as you go through the process, it doesn't increase the scope, then we'll be fine.
Okay, all right. I'll agree.
So, we can probably say, you know, substitute Section eight thirty with new Section eight thirty, and same thing with eight ten, and as long as ultimately, everything is not increasing, then we can go with whatever new wording, even if something comes out on town meeting floor.
Okay, all right.
Right. And when you say increase the scope, meaning increase what this change would apply to?
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
But if we tweak how this works to apply to what Bob was intending to apply to, that should be well within our capabilities to, yeah.
Okay, good. That's what I really wanted to hear. It doesn't have to be word for word, verbatim, for, for a bit at least, until we've had a chance to, to, to massage it.
Right, yeah, I mean, the public hearing will be telling.
Yeah, sure.
We obviously have to have the straw man out there for the public hearing, right? A draft, right?
Yes, we have to have a draft for the public hearing. I mean, and this might be one that, depending on how many people come from the public hearing, you know, we have a public hearing scheduled for the February thirteenth, but if there's a lot of discussion, et cetera, this one may be a continued hearing, and we have, we, we leave time on February twenty-seventh, so any public hearings from the first that need to be continued, we, we have that opportunity.
Yeah, okay.
So, if it has to take two times to get the wording, then let's-
Ultimately, we want to get to a place where we all agree on the wording that we would support, basically.
Right, right.
I think that's where it's at.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
I don't know what happened to my matrix, it disappeared.
I don't know how you're gonna write, write the words to make them so they can't double-dip.
I don't think so.
Wait a minute.
We need to talk about it.
Yes. I guess I really hadn't thought about that. Double-dipping, it's on the other end of the table there.
What's that?
Double-dipping?
Double-dipping. Oh, it's double-dipping.
Which would look like what?
You come in and you, you rebuild it, and then you come back up and you change, change the conformity.
Well, to do that, you'd need a variance, which you wouldn't get from the ZBA.
I didn't follow your, your-
If you increase or add a new non-conformity, that's, that's, you can't do, you're not gonna get permission from the ZBA.
You mean, if you increase the non-conformity when you rebuild it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's a second, first, you rebuild it.
Yeah.
Right, so you come back up and you comply with all of the requirements and you rebuild it. Then, to come back up and go back to the ZBA, you get, get a variance to come back up and change the-
So, you get the variance after that, is what you're saying?
Yeah, but I mean, the ZBA's given very, very, very few variances, and, and-
Not many in my lifetime.
The, the criteria, I, I keep getting told, for a variance is lot shape, topography, or soil, soil type, and that's it.
Yeah.
There isn't anything else that you can claim as a variance.
But if somebody rebuilt it, they would have to pull a billing permit from you.
Right.
And you would determine whether it changed the non-conformance of the, of what was the pre-existing silly, right?
Absolutely. I mean, you can't be more non-conforming than the original building.
So, if somebody chose to build a more non-conforming structure, they wouldn't have done it-
They wouldn't be able to do it.
In, in, you know, in opposition to the permit you did.
Well, not only in opposition, in violation is a better way to put it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, love.
We are now doing some interviews for Design Review Committee. Is this an extra one?
Yeah.
You took mine. All right. Okay, the first is John Buckley.
Thank you for having me.
So, just give us some background, where do you live?
Sure. So, I'm a-
First name, John Buckley?
John Buckley.
Okay.
I live on Anne Vinyl. I'm a relatively new resident. I was born in Hingham, or born in, grew up in Hingham, after school, went to New York, and just recently came back with my wife and a child, and we've since had another. So, I've been in Situate for three years now. I'm an architect, practice residential architecture for my entire, you know, practicing life, professional life. Worked principally in New York municipalities, so in New York City and, and Brooklyn a lot, and then out.
That was a challenge.
It's very challenging. And a lot of work in the Hamptons, the, also challenging, and on the North Fork. So, very familiar with both kind of larger urban scale, you know, building and planning issues, then also the more smaller residential situations. And then, when I moved back here, I started my own practice, and I have an office in Boston, and most of my work is in the Boston area, but I'm, I love Situate. You know, we kind of fell in love when we were looking for a place to live, and, you know, I just would like to be involved, and it's, you know, I'm fairly well-versed in what happens, at least from one side of the table, and fluent in the language, or partially fluent, anyway, and felt that, you know, maybe I had something to offer the town. And that's why I'm here.
Well, thank you. One of the things, as far as the Design Review Committee, you're, the person, whomever, they're appointed by the planning board, but also serve zoning board of appeals. And it is basically advisory, more than anything, and sometimes we pay attention, and sometimes we don't. It all depends.
Most of the time, we pay attention.
Most of the time. But, you know, it's, it's-
Most of the time, but, you know, it's, it's interesting. And how are you with historic preservation, that type of thing?
Well, I don't have a huge experience here. I've dealt with a couple of historic projects in Cambridge. You know, again, I've only been here for three years, so limited experience in our Nakota Woods. But I did a lot of presentation to landmarks in New York, and those were very, those are very active meetings, and there's a lot of follow-up. So, you know, a project might have six follow-up meetings, you know, you might go through the process for a span of a year and a half. So, from that perspective, you know, I've played a part in that pretty heavily.
Could I ask just a question? You said you're primarily residential, have you done much on the commercial side?
I haven't. I've done some restaurant work and some gallery work, but nothing past that.
We end up running sort of the gamut. There is a fair amount residential that's done, but, you know, look at the Toll Brothers and stuff.
Right.
But the last one we did was a mixed use, so it had some commercial with residential and stuff like that.
Right. And, I mean, to be honest, that's the kind of, that's what I'm interested in from a residence perspective, you know, it's great to have people, you know, modifying and building houses, but it's the larger projects that I think, you know, oversight of what's happening there is, would be important to me, just to make sure that things aren't going awry.
That's generally what the Design Review Committee gets involved in, right?
We don't generally put input on it. Sure.
You know, common driveway development or something like that.
Right.
But the bigger ones, at least from my perspective, not being an architect, it's tremendously valuable to have somebody who has, you know, kind of that eye.
Sure.
You know, and Situate is changing. We have, we've redone the zoning in Green Bush, we're working on North Situate. You sat through that presentation, so it's important to be involved in that type of thing. It really is, because we want it to be the best that it can be.
Sure, I mean, I fully agree with that. When I moved here, we were looking at four towns, so Hingham, Cohasset, Hall, and Situate. And, you know, I read the bylaws of all the towns, and one of the things that surprised me was, I felt that Situate, and not necessarily related to the other towns, but more related to my experience, specifically in the Hamptons, Situate's, the bylaws to me and the zoning laws seemed somewhat loose, and, you know, it wasn't alarming in any way, shape, or form, but I noticed that it wasn't kind of as constrictive as some other municipalities. And, you know, from that perspective, you know, we are to some degree the like watchful eye over what happens, or to a large degree. And just to make sure that, you know, that language, what the town decides to do over the long haul is important, and that language is what sets it. And so, it's just a passing point, but it's, I'm interested in that for.
Well, then you need to come to the next master plan meeting.
When is it?
The 28th.
Doing the 20-year plan.
What, excuse me?
Well, yeah, you can come, but that's just advisory.
Oh, all right, but, you know, keep in, keep in touch.
Yeah.
Okay, Bill?
Have you had a chance to look at what we did in Green Bush?
I haven't.
Okay, because that's an interesting thing that we've, at least where we've started.
Sure.
And we're building on that, but I just wanted to know if you had a chance to look at that and had any thoughts about it.
No.
Okay.
Patty?
And that less restrictive use that you mentioned is something that I struggle with here, because we lose a lot of our integrity when we don't keep a close eye on the development, and that's happened to us twice.
Hmm.
That got lost in the bigger picture, and unfortunately, that did. So, that language is very important, that if we keep a focus, when we take a historic property and try to redevelop it or whatever, that we maintain the structure of what is there.
Sure.
One happened right on your street.
I know.
Yes.
Just a different question. How have you, can you kind of give us an example of how you worked? You know, it's always a two-way street in the Design Review Committee. There's a proponent and there's.
Sure.
The Design Review Committee. So, how have you worked in those kinds of situations with, you know, with sort of somebody who wants something different than you do, basically?
Sure.
And worked in a positive way to come to a resolution?
Well, you know, typically, what I've experienced is, you know, you have two different interests, they go to head, you know, head-to-head a little bit, and there's some give and take in between there. And, yes, some instances, what, you know, someone on my side of the table, like a client of mine might be asking for, is just, you know, too far, but you have to ask the question on their behalf. And, you know, I've been party to knowing that we're asking for too much, and then having to bring back to the client and say, it's not going to happen, we need to scale back. But in any case, long and short of it is, there's some kind of, you know, give and take between the two parties.
Yeah.
And, you know, rarely is it just a firm yes or a firm no. So, some kind of back and forth is.
It's called dialogue.
That's right.
Well, oftentimes, what happens here is that whatever development's going on, there's a dozen questions from here about, what's this going to look like, how are you going to do it? And we actually send the developer to the Design Review Committee, hoping that we have the talent, the capability on the Design Review Committee to work with them to build a better project, basically.
Direct it a little bit, yeah.
Ben?
I guess, like, both presently and in the future, what do you envision being some of the biggest issues, I guess, facing a member of the Design Review Committee and what their charge is?
Having not been party to the process, I don't know exactly how to answer, but I can, I'll say this, and maybe this, shooting myself in the foot.
You can get really personal, I mean.
Maybe this is, you know, I know there's always this, like, content, we're not always supposed to be pushing for content. You know, people are supposed to be able to do, there is an as-of-right condition for any property owner, and you've got to be respectful of that. But when we moved here, there was the lot that is now the Toll Brothers project, and I saw that as, you know, to me, as an architect, not a resident, and I was like, wow, this could be really a pretty fantastic property. It could be developed a whole slew of different ways. And I was somewhat surprised to see what happened. And, you know, that would be, I would hope that in some way, shape, or form, you know, were something like that to come up again, it'd have a little bit more of an impact on the direction of what that might become. That's, so, I think that's about the best way I could answer that.
I'll say it? All right, thank you very much, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks for, appreciate it, putting your hand up, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Heather Marshall, I live on Nelson in the Alphabet Streets. I've lived on Nelson Road for the last 12 years. My husband and I bought it as a young graduate out of college, and now we have two kids. I started my own practice five years ago out of my house, I work on my property, but I've been a practicing architect since I graduated in 2006. I worked for a few architecture firms in Boston doing municipality government projects, so all public bid work. And then I just essentially got burnt out, I had kids, and I went to residential. So, that's where I'm at right now. I also ran for the planning board alternate position as well, so here I am.
There you are. And why do you want to be on the Design Review Committee?
I just want to be involved with the town and how it's being developed, that's why I ran for the planning board alternate position, because I really wanted to learn really what you guys are doing and really be immersed into the process. And when I didn't get it, I remember a few people had mentioned that this committee was available, and it would be a really great opportunity to get my feet wet and really understand what's going on and have an input.
Okay. All right, I'll open it up to the board, we'll start with Ben.
Let's see, what, so again, like I said to the last, to Mr. Buckley, feel free to be perfectly candid, what do you think, in terms of projects that the Design Review Committee may or may not have weighed in, I know you probably don't know which ones went to DRC or not, what are some, I guess, larger-scale projects in town now that you admire and think that came out well, and then also that you think could have been better?
Well, my favorite building recently has been the library. I think it's, I know that's not mixed use or a bigger development, but I think we really did a beautiful job with the library. So, Toll Brothers project comes up a lot. I think the planning of it came out great, but there's a few elements, like selecting different materials, that really could have changed it. For instance, the first thing that I noticed was putting the black asphalt roofs, and as a architect that's really, you know, interested in sustainability and just building better for the environment, that they could have switched it to a light gray, which would have cost no extra money. You know, things like that, I, and this is what really kind of drove me to start stepping up and really getting involved, is that there's things that we can do that don't cost more, that can have a better impact moving forward, and things just like a roof color, a, you know, a Design Review Committee could have made a suggestion, not that it would got approved, but something like, something like that, to minimize the heat gain in the buildings. You know, I think the, I don't know what it's properly called, but the Green Bush, it's in the Green Bush, the apartments, I think they, I actually don't mind it, some people say they don't like it, I don't, I don't mind it, so I'm assuming the Design Review Committee was involved in that. It feels, the scale feels good, like the, so my biggest, as an architect, the things that really I'm intrigued in is scale, density, and then sustainability, because I really think that if we overdevelop and we, you know, architects, we get excited, we want to build really big stuff, but it doesn't become human, it like de-scales as a, as a human scale, and that's something that I've really enjoyed as a residential architect, that I can bring the scale back. And, you know, I think that the, that apartment building does a good job, with the different roof lines and things like that. I like it better than the Toll Brothers, but it's not bad, it's just, it's big.
Quote them, they know houses and we don't.
Yeah.
Okay, Bill?
No, I'm all set.
Patty?
What is your take on how we're striving to keep our historic perspective here?
Yeah, so, I've worked, I've done a few houses in Hingham in the historical district off of Main Street, and I've worked on projects in Osterville, and off of their main street, that's their historical. And just going through that process, I don't, I haven't really gotten myself familiar with the Situate historical, but just going through those two towns, they're very particular on things, and, you know, a lot of times, you know, builders and architects will kind of complain about it, like, oh, you know, we can't do that, but there is reasoning to keep that, because once you start changing it, the charm and the, like, scale and those things start to go away. So, you know, I, I have been looking at the historical committee just to kind of, not the committee, but just Historical Society, just to kind of get more involved and understand what our historical landmarks are, because I don't know as, which houses are which without seeing the little plaque, but, you know, part of my thing with Situate, and I love it, the reason why I love Situate so much is that it really feels like a fisherman village, like it's a community, and it's not overly built, like the scale is, it feels good, and, you know, the historical part of that really does keep the houses more on the Cape side and not these big colonials like Norwell and, you know, these other towns are doing. Thank you.
Steve?
I'll ask you the same question I asked the others, is how do you, how would you work with, you know, a proponent on the other side of the table, basically?
Yeah, so, you know, you get into this a lot with just a husband and wife that don't agree, so you almost have to be. Yeah. So, so I actually, my very first, like, client on my own, I had a husband and wife lawyer, lawyers, and turns out, they got divorced, and then the wife called me back to redesign her new house, and the husband then called me back to do his house. So, to me, that was a really good compliment, that even though the two of them were kind of butting heads, I was able to keep a neutral territory, and they both really enjoyed working, so they came back to me separately. But how I handle that is really just listening to the client and then, or the opponent, and then trying to educate them why, you know, not just saying, this is my way because I know better, this is why, and this is, you know, this is why I feel this way. And then, you know, it's really just about educating people. And then hopefully, you can come to a give and take, it's again, it's a give and take, just like he said, but it really is about educating and making sure everybody's on the same board and they understand all the, all the pieces.
Now, do you do work, do you do work in Situate?
I do, so, I'm mostly residential, I, I'm starting to do a little commercial, but I would say more than half of my projects are in Situate, but they're mostly in the South Shore.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, I mean, because I sat in on all these Design Review Committee meetings for Toll Brothers, how, what methodology would you use to show, to, to help convince Toll Brothers that their roof shouldn't have been black?
Yeah, so, I mean, just showing them.
Where they had made up their minds, this, no, this is what it's going to be, how would you?
Yeah, I mean, you would pull up information about how darker roofs, how much heat gain actually comes into the building, and how their mechanical systems have to work harder to heat and cool the space to the optimal temperature, really just showing them, like, look, it's, it's science, like, here's your examples, and it's really, I know it's an aesthetic, but you can still get, you know, a similar aesthetic if you changed a different color. But it would really be more about pulling up that information and showing them what the effects are by picking a darker colored roof. I mean, I try to do that with my own clients, I don't tell, I don't make my clients do more green building, but I do offer that. I tell them, look, if you went with a different colored roof, it's going to make a big difference, or over, you know, insulate your walls, those kind of things. Education.
Heather, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, very kind.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Is the person not coming?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
I have your time now, ma'am.
Paulette?
Hi.
Hi.
Paulette O'Connell, I live on Two Curtis Ave. I've been living there since 2001. Started out just me and my husband, have two kids, a dog. I was commuting to the city when I first moved here, and then 10 years ago, I started my business. I'm now located at Four Brook Street down in the harbor, so I'm talking about mixed-use buildings with that presentation. I think, in a way, that's a really great building, because you do a residential, I mean, you have retail on the first level, all our small businesses on the second, and then all the residential up above, so it's kind of a practice being put there. One of the reasons why I do this, I really want to be more active in the town, I'm at this perfect time in my life, and my kids are finally getting old enough that I can escape the home and put some effort forward. They're 11 and 14, so I'm kind of moving into the next stage of life. And I've been seeing how much Situate's changed in the past 20 years, and it's been amazing. And part of the reason I wanted to leave my job in Boston and come work on the South Shore was kind of keeping, you know, that community, that vernacular, Seastar vernacular going on and keeping it strong in the communities. I work primarily in residential, I do some commercial projects, I've done some multifamily on my own down in Plymouth and other areas. My previous life, as I call it, when I was up in Boston, I was in a multi-discipline firm, so I worked in all sorts of things. I did a lot of recreational, office building, some historic preschools, those were in the gamut. I worked with nonprofits, I worked with developers, I worked with a lot of towns. I've been in front of you as, you know, working as the architect, worked in Marshfield, North Andover, so some more small towns. We were trying to do projects that sort of really meshed and melded with the flavor and feel of each town. So, North Andover, we did a gym, which could be a big, huge boxy thing, like, you know, at the old gates, but we ended up making it look like a barn that was on the property previously, and then, you know, the main, it looks like a house and a barn attached, right, and they're town grain, and that's actually their community center. And it's seen, I wanted to see more things like that, to sort of fit the vernacular of this community as the town keeps growing, is really what I, my passion is and what I think I'd like to bring to this Design Review Committee. And it's seen, I wanted to see more things like that to sort of fit the vernacular of this community as the town keeps growing is really what I, my passion is and what I think would, I'd like to bring to this design review committee.
All right, Bill?
You've, you've spent some time going through Green Bush, I suspect.
Yep.
And what are your thoughts on that?
Um, I gotta say, when you go to Gunther Tooties, the parking is a nightmare, but beyond that, um, I think it's great to see the development moving forward. And I do feel like there is, you know, some more walkability up there, which is kind of really nice because it was a bit of nothingness, especially when that train station first came in, that was just all there was. So it's nice to see a lot more coming into that area and seeing, you know, I, I'm drawn up there because, you know, I want to go to Gunther Tooties, I want to go to the pizza place, I want to walk there. As a groomer, like it's great to see that commercial development coming into that space. So I'm really happy with that. Um, I think the scale of most of the buildings and things that have gone on have been great. Those apartment complexes, um, I just think that the, the, just the drive in getting into that particular development's a bit difficult in general, but that's maybe more user mentality than overall planning.
And when you said, you're talking about Gunther Tooties.
In the, in the apartment buildings. And also like it's hard to even know, like I, I brought my dog to the groomer there and it was hard to even find the groomer. Like I just feel like it, it's a great if you're on foot, but it's, you know, a little bit more presence on the street may have been helpful.
Good to know. Patty?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Ben?
Um, so one of the things the design review committee does aside from review kind of building structures and architectures, also look at kind of how that integrates with the site design, um, holistically and also a little bit, uh, kind of landscape architecture. Um, so I was just curious if you could talk a little bit about your approach or your opinions about, um, kind of projects going on in town or also in your personal practice, about how you, um, would marry those two, uh, those two things?
So the landscape design and the architectural design?
Yeah, kind of site, overall site design, planning and then the building and, and I guess what are the important elements of getting those things to work, right?
Uh, I think it's really important, definitely. Um, I know it's not in our town, but it's like one thing that I always think about is the shipyard. And, you know, I remember they were doing development there and I was like, oh, it'd be so great. They could have buildings and arches and we walk through and you get, you know, you just sit there and you go out to dinner and you walk through and then you get your parking, you know, and, and then it's all these big boxes and things like that. I just feel like there's got to, you got to sort of start with a master plan and sort of how people are using the site. So I think it's important to kind, I even do that, like architecturally, whether it's, um, kind of think of what I would do as a site plan, although not the site designer, and then, you know, talk to a landscape architect or, you know, civil guy and we can work it out there. I mean, obviously, you know, they know traffic patterns and how many turns and things like, I mean, there's a lot more involved than just, you know, you know, putting a park or bench or thing. So I think it's just trying to get a dialogue going of what we think the overall master plans sort of movement on the site should be and then how that would work with the architecture and melding it together. I think it is important to have some outdoor spaces too that kind of work with buildings. Um, you know, I know it's like a really big thing, you know, like if you have a cafe to have seating outside or things like that, I just think it really helps enhance the activity on the street and people see that. So I think, you know, kind of if it's a public building of that sort where there's retail things, is trying to merge those two together and try to get that to work.
Great.
Steve?
And have you, have you had, um, dealt with historical preservation, renovation type projects as well?
Uh, yeah, so I've, on both sides, um, when I was working in Boston and now I've been in front of numerous historical boards, um, you know, in Boston and Hangum down in Virginia, you know, all sorts of different ways. Um, and in my previous firm, we actually did historic renovation. There was an architect too that he specialized in it. We worked with the parks committee, um, and so I'd worked on a number of those projects. So I sort of see both sides of the, the coin there, um, you know, what they're trying to achieve historically or also what we're trying to achieve historically and how we can maybe get people to.
This is with Boston Parks?
Yeah, they were a client of my previous firms.
Interesting.
We did like some work like the Plymouth, you know, the Plymouth Rock covering and things like that and some Coast Guard stations. So we did a lot of work in that aspect.
Karen, do you have any questions?
No. No, okay.
Um, I'm all set and I do appreciate you coming in.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
We're 2:00 PM, it's 9:45 and they're like, Luke, if you can't make it to the interview, we won't be able to stand for the meetings. So, we're here.
This is the nature of the beast.
Exactly.
I tried really hard to have us done by 10.
I'll see you back.
The selectmen had been going until 11:30.
Oh, wow.
We're not doing that.
We don't see 11:30 very often during the week, so.
All right, thank you so much, Patty.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving rapidly along.
So we're not the fourth.
The fourth.
First.
He's, he's, he was in the emergency room today, so he, he's not going to be able to come, so, um, would you like to reschedule him for next time?
Probably ought to give him that.
Give him a shot.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Patty? All right, we have minutes?
I move to approve the meeting minutes for December 12th, 2019 and December 19th, 2019.
Is there a second?
They're the same as you, what you set up?
Yep.
No problem.
All in favor?
Aye.
Accounting?
I move to approve the requisition of $47.78 to WB Mason for office supplies, for $433.44 to Gatehouse Media for legal ads for the Frisk Bankai Corporation, 14 to 16 Old Country Way and 7 McDonald Terrace, for $134.40 to Gatehouse Media for legal ad for 115 Grove Street, for $94.05 to Karen Joseph for mileage reimbursement, for $66,864.96 to Dear Common to LLC for partial surety release, for $1,650 to Merrill Corporation for peer review services for 115 Grove Street, and for $2,175 to Merrill Corporation for peer review services for Dear Common.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Liaison reports.
I don't have anything in particular, but I do have a request that's been asked of me.
Yes.
That there, I have been asked to step aside from the Shellfish Advisory Committee, um, for some potential future business opportunities that could be perceived as a conflict of interest. So I, they have requested that a new liaison take over for me from the planning board. That's.
Okay.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
Don't everybody speak at once?
And how often do they meet?
Tell them no.
It's kind of nebulous. It's, um, yeah, it's, I've been to meetings on Tuesday and I've been to meetings on Thursdays, like they're meeting right now, for instance. Um, and there's also a lot of meetings where they're actually at the Board of Selectmen because they're kind of working everything out.
Right, and that went until 11:30 at night?
Yeah.
And that's ridiculous.
Yeah.
So.
Were you there?
I left. Are you kidding?
I was just going to say, if you were there, you might as well take a rap.
Go anyway.
No. No, I'm, I'm doing enough things as it is. So.
Rebecca's not here too, either.
Yeah, well, we'll figure it out later.
Or we could just assign it to her.
That's not fair. That's not fair. Any other liaison reports? Bill, do you have anything?
No.
Conservation was interesting. They're talking about Grove Street and that's kind of all over the place still up there. And that Holmes Project.
Oh, 115 Grove.
And then they talked about putting it a street. I was like, what? Hold on, back that up because everybody gets their definitions confused. And talking about cutting down trees and all that kind of, that's still a very wishy-washy hustle up there. Yeah. So, um, conservation was all over the, about undergrowth and stuff like that and chopping down trees and to be very careful about berms and, you know, and that's such a busy intersection in, I think he was surprised that people were really on top of what was happening now. Mr. Dwight was, he was like, oh, like, people know, are you watching us?
Yeah, he didn't slide that one in, did he?
No, he was, yep. So that, that's all I have to say about that, but it's, it's bears watching.
Okay. I have nothing to report.
Haven't you been off this week?
No. Karen? Oh, the only thing I can tell you is, um, now there's two-hour parking in the town lot up in North Situate. Oh. So, it, and then people are concerned, what about people that work in North Situate? Where are they going? So it's an issue. We'll see what happens. The one thing we don't have in North Situate in terms of parking so far has been enforcement.
The families don't sound like they're a problem.
No, they're not. Nope. All right, Karen?
Um, we remain very busy and, um, I sent you some information earlier this week. We approved, um, an insignificant change for Toll Brothers that they can go with, uh, some permeable paver patios, um, with, you know, it was all peer reviewed, I sent you all that. Um, so we're still, they are still anticipating first occupancy is projected for later this month up there, but.
Really?